The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, July 8th, 2021.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, please bless this gathering of our city council. Please let your Holy Spirit guide them in their deliberations, that they may remember the constituents that are most in need. And, Lord, please send us the water that we so desperately need. Amen. Amen, Father, and the Holy Spirit.
(inaudible)
Mayor Robertson?
(inaudible)
Councilman Fungus?
(inaudible)
Councilman Carson?
Here.
Councilman Spear?
Here.
Councilman Hallworth is absent today. City Clerk Lee?
Here.
City Treasurer Trask?
Here.
City Interning Cleveland?
Here.
City Public Works Supervisor Craycraft?
Yes.
City Building Official Walker?
Here.
City Engineer Alberg? City Police Chief Henry?
Here.
And that's all.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll die into public comment. Please state your name for the record, and we'll have three minutes.
My name is Linda Dervidge. I would like to comment on Agenda Item 3-1, Selection to Fill Ely City Council Seat 5. It appears that rumors have been circulated concerning one or more of the candidates for the position. Because Ely is small, rumors can be very damaging. The city council should have realized after the last appointment, the stereotyping candidates is not a good thing. My hope is that the mayor and the councilman will disregard rumors and gossip, and vote for the candidate that is most qualified. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item 3, why do you consider selecting an individual to fill the vacant city council seat 5? That in earlier meeting, I asked to be considered and included in my request. On your agenda today, you have two names, neither of which has application in today's pack-up, nor a sponsor list. The open meeting law requires you to be specific. You are not invited by your own rules. It appears that you're turning the city council in a good old white glove. You have the open vote. I don't see any sponsorships for anyone. Mr. Mayor, I have not found a thought that could help me remediate my propagate 710 AMG. I talked to the building inspector and asked him to allow me to take care of the problem the same way it was allowed by the community choir. He agreed, and I asked him for a permit and something in writing prior to proceeding. I have not received anything yet. I have made numerous attempts through the county council meetings, regional planning commission meetings, and city offices. Fifteen attempts, the last three on July 1st, then on July 6th, then lastly July 7th, 2021. I want to make it clear to the council that I have made an attempt to comply. I'm disappointed that the council has turned a blind eye to infractions that I have reported regarding councilmen, city councilmen, county commissioners, and others. I want to give protection under the law. On behalf of the permits, I can get started. You're not treating me the same as you do others. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item 11, to reconsider the recommendation renewed to the lease of the golf course between the Ely Municipal Water Service Department, who I've been telling you for 30 years, that item needs to be done either. Until it has proven that they have paid it for the 111 million gallons of water required those reported by Councilman Hallworth at a previous meeting, how much did they pay in late fees? Are they paying the same rates as you have set for other light entities? Article 12 agreement says they have to pay all fees and utilities. That's not evident. I want to remind you that the city might discriminate against any federal fund or assisted public utility. I also remind you that the city has yet to rectify the various billings for me and my family. How many times do I have to tell you that? Again, I want to give protection under the law. Mr. Mayor, I attended the White Mine County Regional Transportation Commission meeting held on July 7th, 2001. I reported the access to my property is located on the 700 block of Great Basin. Sewer connections to the two lots are located at the far west end of the motor lot. Sewer connections to be, need to be made in the front of each lot, not run on 40 to 50 feet across another person's property or driveway.
Thank you, George. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, it's Whitey Cox, I'm K E L Y. I wanted to just take a moment to congratulate our new individuals at the Bristol Club Tribune. It is a challenge operating any media these days, much less any media that is not directly connected to the internets and such. And I wish them the best of luck, particularly given the fact that one of the contributors too said media is one who seldom finds anything worth complimenting this community about. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Alan Wise. I'm representing Great Basin Service Club here today. We would like to ask the city council a favor. Next time you have Mr. Bassett here doing his report for the railroad, why don't you ask him why they have not donated to the fireworks fund since 2007? That is the year we moved to the golf course. Since then, they have not donated a dime. The railroad cars are full when they go out. They're making lots of money. They need to support a project that they're making a lot of revenue off. We struggle every year just to break even. They used to pay when we were at the industrial park, but they were really offended when we moved to the golf course. They thought we were going to burn their buildings down and the such, and they have opposed it ever since. But we think they need to kick in their share. You need to be asking that. Also have one comment that Mrs. Dervidge was up here. I find it kind of ironic that she called me at home yesterday, asking me what I thought of Ms. Williams Harper, and I told her some negative things because I don't approve of her getting this position. And then she said, "Well, we're trying to get people to call Mr. Spear to try to convince him that she needs to be on the board." And I again then again told her that I would not support her. I've seen too many things go wrong and what she has done out at that school. There's better opportunity for this city to progress and grow. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Chad Racken, Robertson. In your response to the last public comment, I was an employee at the Ely-Bunny Bridge Charter School, so having firsthand knowledge of the candidate speaks, I think, more true and to the point of Dr. Williams Harper's appointment. She led the Ely-Bunny Bridge Charter School through the pandemic with absolute aplomb. She's been nothing but supportive and encouraging to my professional and academic development. She is a consummate professional, and anyone speaking ill against her obviously does not know her. I worked with her for 10 solid 11 months over the last year. She's a close personal friend of mine, as well as being a professional mentor, and I wholeheartedly, fully endorse her as councilwoman.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing the same now, we'll close the public comment and move on to Item 3. Item for discussion, possible action only of the Ely City Council. Item 1, Mayor Roberts, for discussion for possible action. Selection to fill the Ely City Council Seat 5, nominee for the seat of Jeremy Lilly and Jerry Lynn Williams Harper. At this time, I'd like to say Jeremy and Lilly have pulled his name. With that, if I step out of our protocol here, Leo will let me know, but what I think I'd like to have is we'll have Jerry Lynn Williams Harper come up and address the board. Just as a reminder, the way this works is the four remaining council members and the Mayor-McPepper Committee to vote on and select a replacement for the empty seat. Of course, Councilman Hallworth is here, so it's the remaining three council members and myself who have the vote. You may ask the candidate questions. She is my nominee. I chose to nominate Jerry Lynn Williams Harper for a slew of reasons, which we'll get into, and after we hear from her. Please come up.
Good evening, gentlemen. It's my pleasure and my privilege to be here with you this evening. My name is Dr. Jerry Lynn Williams Harper. I am the charter school administrator. Very proud to be here, very proud to work with the young people in our community. I'm very proud of the experiences and the education I have that I feel have brought me to this point, and that I'm equally eligible to be a part of this council, to be a learner, should I join the council, to also give what I know and what I have done and the things that I have been involved in. It's probably better that you ask me questions because I'm not sure what you would like to hear.
Would you mind discussing some of your past administrative experience?
Yes. This year will be my 41st year as an educator. The last 34 of them have been as an administrator. I have been an assistant principal, a dean of students, a principal, middle school principal, a high school principal. I have been a superintendent of four different school districts. I have had the opportunity to be involved in building schools from the ground up, in policy, in working with boards. I have been a presenter at the state level. I have been awarded for my work in leadership in dealing with some difficult situations along with other colleagues. And I firmly believe that we all went to school, we all had a teacher, and I feel like what I have chosen to do with my life is at the root of why everyone is sitting here. Having an education is very important, as all of you have, and it is the reason that you are sitting here and that you are able to make decisions for this city. So I feel that having such an extensive background in administration, also having a doctorate in leadership, organization, and change management, and being very proud of the fact I was at a crossroads and trying to decide if I would finish my doctorate or if educational law was what I wanted to do. So I did do a year of law school, which was very, very helpful in my role as a school administrator. So again, I'm very proud to be here amongst you because you have a very, very difficult job. It's not easy. You have people pulling you every which way all the time because everyone wants something different sometimes.
One of the reasons I chose to nominate Dr. Williams Harper was my stock or involvement here in our community. Could you discuss some of the organizations you're a member of? If you're local?
Well, one of the wonderful things, being a superintendent and doing it for so many years, is you become a part of organizations, and you learn that that is your job, and you learn that that's how you learn the community. So I have been a motarian, I have been Alliance Club member, I have been a K'wana's member for at least 20 years. So I understand the importance of those civic organizations and what they do for a city, and the importance of how people in organizations like that donate their time, donate their talents, not looking for any thanks, but doing what they do because they want to be proud of the city in which they live.
You're also a member of our local Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, I am on the board of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Any other questions for our panel?
I really don't have any questions. I'd like to take a comment, tell you a minute. First, I've worked with her on the Chamber of Commerce a couple of times and whatnot, and appreciate her knowledge. I really enjoyed being around.
And one of my other reasons for nominating Jerry Lynn Williams Harper and my excitement that she was interested in accepting that nomination when I spoke with her was that I believe that a variety of backgrounds and life experiences onboard makes for better discussion, makes us a more professional entity, and I think makes city government run better. We have a lot of different entities we interact with and having great experience from Mr. Spear, and Mr. Carson, and Mr. Hallworth, and Mr. Fungus that have served us well. They come from very different backgrounds, and having someone with her professional acumen and education and experience, I think, could only add to that. We've had a lot of great people serve over the years in our community, and I think she would fit in well among those. So I appreciate your comment, and thank you for your statement, Dr. Harper. Any other questions?
No, I agree to state my problem. It got off there pretty quick that I was, I was finishing this candidate I had never met her. I had no relationship with her whatsoever. I looked her up because, as I would any candidate, when I found on the internet, I wasn't really happy with her. And one of them was happy in the school district in Flint, and it brought me some grave concern. And I, you know what I'm talking about, but I do know that there have been some people calling me, trying to give me this to change my mind, but I haven't totally made my mind up one way or the other, but I do know that when I see some of the things that I've read, maybe they're not true, but they're all over the internet, you've seen them, you know what I'm talking about, that really concerns me on this type of position. I know it's a, I'm not going to go into this total background. I got along with her. I printed it all, read it, studied it, tried to figure out what's, that's come out of that, but I do like people that are involved in the community, you know, right? My whole life has been involved with the community as well, you know, and it's really rewarding to get out there and get involved. I did have those concerns. I'm not going to ask you particular questions about them because you couldn't even find the answers on the internet. They accept agreements, and I'm not sure what else involved with that, but that's what I was faced with. And then I talked to some other people that have been involved at the charter school, and they didn't have quite as many activities as we prepared tonight. You know, everybody has different reasons for whatever they do. I mean, I'm not like anybody. Everybody's not gonna like me, that's for darn sure. But I'm the one that they're trying to lobby, and I've gotten a lot of phone calls. And, you know, if I, I just want to tell you that, you know, those are my concerns, and I appreciate some time, you know, maybe sit down with you, because we have a long ways to go in the east. You know, we have a very tough budget. We have some great programs coming up. I suspect the COVID recovery funds will be something that's going to be kind of funded to do some things with, but it's more challenging than I thought it was going to be. Having said that, I'm the one that had the concerns. I mean, I would support whatever the council does, that's just what you do. Anyway, that's what I wanted to tell you.
May I address Mr. Spear?
You may.
I thank you very much for doing your homework. Being a superintendent is, as an educator, is the most difficult job that you will ever do because you are supposed to please the community. As a superintendent, my job has always been first and foremost to make sure that we have a strong educational community. And lots of things have to happen. I've dealt with millions and millions of dollars running a school district. I have dealt with very large boards, depending on the size of the district that I was in. And it is very difficult because every board member is not always been there for the right reasons. Or if a board member doesn't agree with me, you see some of the things that you see, and you're absolutely right. You have an excited dimension of what's going on. And if at any time you would like to hear another version of what you see, I would be more than happy to talk with you anytime. So thank you for, thank you for doing homework.
Appreciate you.
Well, I believe Councilman Spear has also had.
Pardon?
You've also had experience, even with the board, if you're new.
Oh, yeah.
Over the years.
Yeah, I've never handled different, that's part of it, you know, of this, yeah, that's my idea. So I'm all out there, you know, I don't agree, nothing's politically clear, it's not going to do that, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from our, our, um, with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve Dr. Jerry Lynn Williams Harper as, as a new member of our council that will opt term, which ends November 2022. I will second. Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes for zero. Welcome, I'll have you sworn in.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So that will be Item 4, swearing newly appointed officer by city clerk. Item 1, Councilmember Seat 5, turn to the summit for the passage of Assembly Bill Number 50 until the elections are held on November 2020.
What's your name, Mayor? Mayor, are you ready first?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I, Jerry Lynn Williams Harper, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and the government of the United States, and the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada, against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, and that I will well and faithfully perform all the duties as a member of the Ely City Council, Seat 5, on which I am about to enter. So thank you. Thank you.
Do you wish to introduce to the, wherever you'd like to sit? Welcome aboard. Okay, with that, one more item of business to take care of here, as we're aware, since the director of council in future goes in Metro 10. We've been running without a number two, so item 5 is Items for Discussion, Possible Action Only of the Ely City Council. Item 1, Mayor Councilmember's Discussion for Possible Actions, Selection of One City Councilmember to Serve as a Metro 10, per City Code 1-5-3, and that is the determination for the councilman. I'd like to move to nominate Dr. Williams Harper. Do we have a second for that nominee? You can second that if you like. Okay. Motion from Councilman Carson, second from Dr. Harper, Councilwoman Williams Harper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6, Mayor Discussion for Possible Action, Approval of Agenda Including Removal Agenda Items. Are there any corrections or removals to any agendas that are suggested at this time? Not all are can motion. Although they're approved. Motion to approve the agenda, do I have a second? Second from Councilman Spear. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Speak up. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7, City Department Reports. Our fire chief got called away on an accident by lobbies, so he is not here at the moment, but you do have his report for review, Police Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, and welcome aboard Dr. Harper. Congratulations. Looking forward to working with you. Just a point of interest, just to let you know, July 21st and 22nd, we'll be hosting Sheriff's and Chiefs Meeting here in Ely, so you'll see about 60 to 70 police chiefs and sheriffs and other law enforcement leaders from around the state of Nevada in and about your communities, so don't be alarmed at all the cars, but just give your heads up. We're looking forward to that. That's our annual training that we do here, so just let you know. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I read Blue Ox around. Municipal Court Jeff, I don't know if he's on the bill. Do you have anything for us, Judge Coster?
Sorry that I was slow to unmute. Well, reporters do at the next meeting. I'm here for any questions you might ask.
Any questions for Judge Coster? Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Second.
No further report. Okay. City clerk?
I wanted to report to the council that the governor's finance office has received the city village's request for the American Rescue Plan for coronavirus global fiscal relief plan allocation, an amount of $5,364,518 in the six cents. And the city received $1,200 from NADIS Fund for adoption base, so there were six animals that were docted out when we made our adoption piece, and that's all I have to report, unless there are any questions.
Any questions for the board? City treasurer? Nothing to report. City Public Works Supervisor? May I, may I just say congratulations on all the running around with hard work over the fourth and work on the park and everything else? It was a lot. It was a lot. You have all the different municipal public works reports there, city water operator you have to report, city engineer?
First, I guess I'd like to say welcome aboard, I'm sure you'll be, you'll be great. We started, the city hired a temporary summer employee, and so one of them is actually coming and working out of our office, and they're actually doing the collection of the GIS system. And so that started, you know, a week and a half ago or so. You know, he's doing a great job, so I'm pretty excited about it. This is something we've been trying to get going for a while, and this is the first step that's going to go a long ways to start getting this to happen, and so that's a great thing. He's doing a great job right now. I think he's working between Great Basin Boulevard and Murray Street on Camden, doing Bell Avenue, doing different things along the way. And so we'll just kind of keep moving him around in the community to collect the stuff. So he's doing a great job, and I'm excited about it.
I've almost run him over a couple of times.
Oh.
Tell them I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll tell them. And so if you see, if you see a bunch of blue paint on the ground and green, that's because he's buck on by, and he's kind of marking him off as he goes, so everybody's aware that they get it. We're working with the landfill. They got their permits, they got a permit to do, it's coming up for renewal, I think it's in mid-September. We got all the paperwork done. Tom's gone through it for the landfill, made some adjustments to what we had, so that I'll take care of. We just got, the landfill footprint kind of changed, so we've got to do a new exhibit to go with that landfill footprint change, and so we'll get that exhibit done, we'll get that turned into them. I had a meeting with Endall last week, talking about their future phases of this Aldman Street project, and so one of the things that came out of that meeting, they wanted us to go back and start putting together costs associated with completing out this project as far as the city utilities and stuff is concerned, and to use the unit cost that we just recently had on this project to be the most current ones we have for the area. And so we're compiling all of that information and getting that back together for them so that they can use that to figure out how they're going to complete the future phases coming through here based on budgetary costs and stuff that they're, that they're coming into. Those are the major things that we're dealing with right now. We got some other stuff on Murray Street that's coming up through the, another agenda up here, over Murray Street at that point. Okay? Any other questions?
Yeah, from the
Yeah, from Mr. Goober up on 900 block on Murray Street has an issue. Wrote my name. I'm going to look that for you because it did...